Gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Ridgecrest City Council. We'll let everyone get situated here real quick. Okay, we'll go and call our meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Bruin.
Here.
Mr. Blades.
Here.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Present.
Mr. Hayman.
Present.
Mr. Gorman.
Present.
Five present, we have a quorum.
Great. Next item, first item is our approval of our agenda for this evening. Are there any changes to the agendas presented? Hearing none, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Roll call.
We're gonna, please vote on the slides. Oh, you got it on. Skip. It looks like you're okay now.
Yep.
Thanks.
Five eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
If I can ask everyone to go and please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Chief, would you mind, mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Rajaratnam.
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this day. Thank you for this beautiful city which we cherish and we live in. Lord, bless each one of us here today. Lord, bless our country. Let this country be a beacon of hope to many other countries, Lord. I pray for our troops who are in harms may protect them from all evil. I pray for our first responders, the police department, the fire department. Lord, protect them for any harm that they encounter during serving this community, Lord. Lord, bless their families. Lord, be with us as we conduct this meeting. Lord, let the discussions we have be beneficial to this community. Bless each one of us here, in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. We are going to begin our evening with two series of presentations. These are the annual reports for our citizen-approved measures. The first will be the Measure V Annual Report. It looks like Holly will be presenting that. Hello.
Thank you, Rika. I'm Holly Staub. I'm presenting tonight for, actually for both reports. So we're gonna start with Measure V. I served on the committee with four other great citizens who are a lot of help to this. So start off by recognizing them. Chris is here in the audience with us tonight. So thank you for being here. Okay, so what is Measure V? Measure V started technically in 2012 as Measure L, right? So that was a 1% sales tax, revoted in in 2016. And this one, right now, in Measure V expires in April of 2025, so we're coming up on that. When it was put on the ballot, excuse me, the ideas for what it would pay for are listed down there on the bottom. We wanted to fund our police department and our infrastructure, so public works, roads, things like that. I would, sorry. Okay. So a little background, this is the 11th year, like we just talked about, that we're reporting out. The Measure L piece, the reason we report on Measure L, we're gonna touch on that on a little bit later slide, but I'll go ahead and say it now so it doesn't confuse people as I go. Some of the businesses in town are behind on paying some of their sales taxes, so those Measure L funds still roll in. I would say trickle in, not roll, but you will see some funding up there from Measure L, that's why. All right, so our responsibilities as a committee, we don't have any say in what the city spends the money on right now, or the oversight committee for what they did already spend it on. So we look over the financial reports, we talk to the staff, we talk to Travis, we talk to the police department, get all the information that we can to see that they're really spending this money how they said that they were going to and how they said that they did. Both, right? All right. Next one. So this is what they were planning on doing with the money for FY '23. They wanted to fund more officers. And the, so the additional officer-initiated contacts, that was a stat that we saw go down as we were lower in officer count and increased in the reporting level that the officers had to do. So officers are able to respond, right? It's, but they weren't able to be as proactive as they wanted to be. So with these additional officers that Measure V is able to fund, they're able to do more proactive policing and more interaction with the community. Capital improvement, we all see that around the city. We all see the roads getting improved. Might be a pain while it's happening, but it is happening and we love it when it's done. And then just recruitment and retention of city staff, always working on that. So a little focus on the police department. Measure V funds fund 43% of their budget. It's a huge piece. Totals out to $2.97, almost $3 million. Can see we were able to purchase a new van for the animal control department and able to increase that security in the back for, my gosh, evidence, things that they bring in. It was just kind of one big parking lot before, so this was, the money was made it so they could improve that area back there to be more secure. The other thing was the rear seat conversions. I thought that was really interesting. I didn't realize we still had some police cars that didn't have the hard plastic seats in the back, so our officers were having to clean up after a lot of things that we don't want to talk about. So Measure V was able to fund the department to replace those seats with the hard plastic seats. Obviously, more hygienic for everyone, and it saves time, which always saves money. So we like that. Focus on public works. Got those two pretty new trucks up there, the equipment down at the bottom. So this one, without the 40-something percent for police is a lot. For public works, it's 90% that Measure V is funding. That's almost $9 million. We all, like I said, we all see the repairs being done around town. We see the equipment in use. We see the planning, the planning in place so that we're not just haphazardly fixing this and fixing that. There's a lot of work that goes into planning ahead. They have, excuse me, our entire report, I should have started with this. This right here is just a presentation of the highlights. There's a whole report available at the city's website, if you'd like to read that. And it gets into, they have a five-year plan, so the staff is constantly updating that five-year plan as they check things off, and they're always ahead. In fact, I kind of grilled them about it this year. I was like, hey, wait, why is this a five-year plan if we're always finishing? But they're, they're just doing that great with the planning and utilizing the budget. There is overrun that comes from public works, I'm sorry, backwards. There is leftover funding at the end of the fiscal year, usually with the public works budget, but that has to do with the way that they're paying off the work in line with the city's fiscal year. So the money's all budgeted, the money's all planned for, there's not extra money sitting around. Revenue by source, that's a good snapshot at the bottom. The total tax revenue that the city brings in, and then the total from Measure V, and then you see that trickle in from Measure L down there at the bottom. So the takeaway for me on this is that 34% of the city's revenue was generated by Measure V. That's a huge, huge number there, a huge benefit to everyone that lives here. The expenditure by source is listed up there. You can see the capital projects and then the, so that on the left focuses more on public works, and the right is the police department. Go on to the next one here. The public works key takeaways. The, that talks about the five-year plan there. So they're projecting work all the way through 2030 already, and they've successfully rehabilitated 77% of the streets in Ridgecrest with this money. And it's not, that's not something that will be done, right? We won't ever finish. So they can rehab, but by the time you're finishing these, others will be up for repair again. So what they're planning is that maintenance rollover, I don't know if that's the right word for it, but to constantly be keeping up the older things while improving the newer things so that nothing gets to that state of disrepair that we all remember we were at a handful of years ago. Conclusions. So our job, like I said, is to make sure that this money is spent the way that the city promised it would be spent and that they are accounting for that clearly. We ran into no hurdles at all trying to get to the information. Everything was very transparent, very easy to find in the reporting what the city does. I didn't talk about this. So both Measure V and Measure P are what they call general fund. So technically, they just go into the general fund, but they don't just go in there as an abyss. They use a separate accounting line for all of that money so they can trace the penny that came in all the way to the penny that went out. So it makes it really easy for us to do our job, to come look over those books and see that, sure enough, it did go where they said that it did and on the things that they promised it would be spent on. So we, again this year, are commending the city and the staff for the work being done with this money. Any questions on Measure V before I go on to the other? Oh, okay. I just clicked to the next. Oh, yes. Okay. Switch my hats. Measure P. Measure P is brand new. We are only reporting on a couple months out from this one, so not a big shocking report here or anything, but same idea behind this one. It was a 1-cent sales tax, just got voted in in 2022. It will end after nine years. The promises behind this one, as most of us are familiar with, we're getting that pool for everyone to use, again, helping out with the public safety in both fire and police. We did have to start paying a substantial amount more to the county for fire services. So this money is going to be very useful in paying that bill so we can continue to have the great services that we have in our community. And then our quality of life events, things that the city's putting on, farmer's market, the city lights, great events that I know so many people have been enjoying already. I kind of just went over this, sorry. There's a, a little more detailed list of what we wanted to spend the money on. Okay, so each area, reinstating the police officers. The, even just with the small amount that Measure P brought in this year, they were able to restore four positions to the police department, which brings between Measure V and Measure P, the positions up to 22 police officers who are funded by this tax, both taxes together, sorry. And then for the pool, the Measure P funds covered that initial amount for the engineering design, not for it, towards the, the design and engineering of the pool. Fire services. So when you look at the accounting, and this is where, this was a good example of that transparency that was easy for us to follow. So the city's auditors recommended, because of the short time and not knowing for sure how much was going to come in from the tax, the auditors recommended they don't spend the money straight out of that tax. They used the general fund money this year, but the city, the staff has it very clearly in the books where that came out of the general fund and is already budgeted out of Measure P to pay that money back to the general fund. Smart accounting, smart money management, no questions from the committee on that choice there. So that, yeah, that's at $415,000. That was how much it was this year. I, forgive me, I think we have it in the report, but that number's gonna go up quite a bit over the next few years. So that's great that it was able to fund this, and we look forward to it funding more. For the new city positions, those are staff here, same, all things that will benefit all of us and clearly delineated in the reports. Public outreach, the city nights, nights on balsam, farmer's market, all those things have been a blast. And we did get to see that as well, where the money was spent. They are actually with some revenue that came back in from that. Obviously, we're not doing those events to try to raise money, but that was accounted for. So I bring that up just to say the detail and the accounting that we saw was very clear. And then for the pool bond, no money was spent out of the measure this year on that, but it is planned, it's budgeted, they've got all of the plans in place that they've promised for. It's just early and not a lot's happened with it yet. So for this, for, I say this year, for fiscal year '23, Measure P generated 8% of the total tax revenue, and it was only the fourth quarter. So it was all spent, again, just like Measure V, just how the city promised it would be spent. The accounting was all very clear. We had very transparent interactions with the staff in reporting for it and look forward to a good future. Any questions on that one?
I have no questions, Holly, but if you don't mind, just to help with one of the facts you mentioned, in this report, fire was $415,000. In fiscal year '28, fire will be up to $1.48 million. So very important to understand that, yes, it will increase by over $1 million in terms of an annual cost each year by fiscal year '28, which is why it was so important to secure P for, to ensure that there were no issues with our fire service today or moving forward. The other one was just that, that shameless plug that the demolition of Penny Pool began on September 3rd.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Sorry.
No, I just want to make a comment. Thank you very much for your hard work and time you have taken in putting this report together and also providing a copy ahead of the meeting so that we understand what you have done. So really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll say again, the actual reports are available at the city's website along with the financial accounting, if anyone really wants to dig into the numbers themselves. That's all there.
Yeah, thank you for the work. Like, it is time out of your day, and I appreciate you stepping up and, you know, getting it done. Thank you, everybody else on the committee.
Great people on both committees, yeah.
Yeah, we're lucky.
Everyone's just saying.
On my end, a big thank you to you and the committee for your hard work and the importance of the, you know, I hate to use the word transparency and it gets overused, but, you know, to the public that this money is being spent and utilized in the way that, you know, we said it would, and it being overseen, and it's an extremely important endeavor on your part, and we appreciate it greatly, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you to the entire committee.
Excellent. I do hope the citizens will take a moment to read those reports. They are very informative, and I think it's a great moment of pride that we're on our 11th year of that citizens oversight, and for 11 consecutive years, we've continued to demonstrate that transparency and trust with the public. Next item is our public comment section. Any public comment of items not on the agenda, persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments but may provide direction to staff to collect information pursuant to the Brown Act. City council may not act on item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a one hour. Each speaker is asked by his or her name. Is there any public comment from the floor?
I'm not gonna take five minutes. Good evening, council. I'm Tom Wacknick. Couple meetings ago, you had a presentation on renewing the tax, and there was a slide in there that I brought a question to the council here about. The one slide that said that the distribution of the funds coming in was, I don't remember the numbers exactly, so don't help me exact, but it's 53% county and 47% city, and I asked a question where those numbers came from. And nobody had an answer at that meeting, and I thought somebody would get back to me with an answer on how those numbers were acquired. I even asked you, Solomon, to look into it. You said you would, but I was wondering if we have an answer to that question yet.
I don't remember the question.
Pardon me?
It was how we, it was how we broke up the 53-47. I don't know the answer to the question off the top of my head, so I'm not gonna answer.
Okay, could we have somebody answer the question for me? I would appreciate that. Because if, if the number's good, that's fine, but I'd just like to know where the numbers came from.
Yeah, I'll answer it. My city manager's comment.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Any public comment on the phones? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on with our council announcements or direction. Is there any council announcements? No? I'm just gonna do the, the thank you to our city staff and all of our participants for Ridgecrest City Nights. Had another great time out there. Excited to see all the different faces, and thank you to all of the car owners in this community that came out and, and showed their wares. It was a lot of fun. It was, it got a little dark over there at the very end of the night, and our, our officers were right on top of it and turning lights on. It looked fantastic. So it was a lot of fun. We have our next event, we are getting, barreling towards a lot of other events, but the big one that I just wanted to again announce and remind the community is if you are available at 10:00 AM on September 3rd, we'd love to see you at the demolition of the Penny Pool site. That is our kickoff event for the reconstruction of the community pool. They will have done the, the necessary other hazardous materials clearing before then, and then we can have a little fun taking the building down. So I hope that you guys had a chance to join us. And I'll, Kyle, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to get to my calendar. So I know that the police are having their open house September 6th, which will be a couple of them moving in the park, and I believe that is sponsored, correct me if I'm wrong, by Toyota, right? Right? Yep, okay. And then I know that Parks and Rec, you guys already began asking for trunk, trunk or treaters, right?
Mm-hmm.
Cool. So long as that's out there.
I think that's October 20?
October 25th.
25th? And if anybody's never been to a trunk or treat, bring your kid, it's a lot of fun.
It's getting more and more wild every year.
It is a lot, a lot of fun.
Godspeed, Nerissa.
Any other council announcements? Okay. CNN, move on to our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff, consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. I'll now read the two, the two consent items. Item number one is proposed action to approve the draft minutes of the Ridgecrest City Council regular meeting dated August 7th, 2024. And item number two is proposed approval of an increase appropriations to the fiscal year 2025-26 budget to purchase police equipment. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second.
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
Great, next is item number three. Item number three is discussion and proposed action to approve a resolution designating a voting member and alternate to attend the League of California Cities Annual Conference and represent the city of Ridgecrest. Ms. Sharlin.
So currently, we have four of you, four people attending. Two appear, Mr. Gorman and Mr. Blades, and then also I have City Manager Strand registered, and Public Works Director Reed is registered. So there'll be four of you attending. So we just need to decide up here among Mr. Gorman or Mr. Blades, who's gonna be our voting delegate and who's gonna be our alternative voting delegate in Long Beach in October. So however you guys wanna discuss and do that.
I, I believe that Mr. Gorman should be our delegate.
I'd be glad to.
I think that that settles the issue.
Okay, and then we'll just put Kyle as the alternate?
Correct.
I would assume yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. I've done it a few, I've done it a few times, and I can.
And we can just approve that on minute motion, so if you'll just take a first and a second, we'll just do a roll call vote.
Okay, it's in a different spot. I thought it was under Brandon.
It was on what?
Well, I thought it was for the next one, it was the minute motion. Is that minimum for each one?
You know what, you may be right. I'm sorry. Yeah, so please, go on, Eric.
I don't, I don't think this requires a motion, I think the next one does.
We should mark this on the calendar, Eric. Eric was right over you.
That is a rarity. Okay.
I apologize.
No, you're fine. I think that's just discussion and agreement amongst the council, correct?
I thought that we put it on for.
It is, but it's for, it's for, it's for Mr. Temple's appointment.
For the minute motion?
Yes.
For this one, we have a resolution, so it does need a vote, a vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Gorman as the primary and Mr. Blades as the alternate designating, designated voting members for the League of California Cities?
I move that we approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second.
Please vote. And my mic is very loud tonight, I apologize. Five eyes, motion carries.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Next item is item number four. Item number four is appointment of committee member to Measure V Committee. Mr. Temple, Mr. Hayman.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I'd like to thank Councilman Blades for introducing me to Brandon Temple. Brandon has stood up and is willing to participate in city matters and government, and I think in talking with him, he brings a, a lot of very fine attributes to the position. He's a business owner in Ridgecrest. He's young, so he brings a younger generation into the, into the participation and government dealings, and so I want to thank him for that. I think to find, you know, quality young business people and, and people that are willing to, to step into this arena is a, is a real fine attribute that you have. So I want to thank you, Brandon, for, you know, for willing to, being willing to do this and, and for the appointment, so. And any future participation that you may have in city government, whether it be at this dais or in other aspects of the city. So we, we welcome you. And if you would like to come up and, to the podium and get your feet wet and have a few words, you can. If you don't, that is perfectly okay, too.
Well, I was a little embarrassed. I thought I was gonna blush in front of everyone. Those were such kind words. Thank you, I appreciate it. And although we have only spoke a few times, you, you know, I appreciate the dialogue with you and the rest of city council, and I'm very excited to, you know, contribute on this end of things and help wherever I can. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for stepping up.
With that, do I have a motion, a minute motion or whatever?
Just a motion.
A motion, yeah. A motion to approve Mr. Temple's appointment to the Measure V Committee.
Move to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second.
And I'm gonna do a roll call on this one, I did not make a slide.
Roll call vote.
Mayor Bruin.
Aye.
Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Rajaratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Gorman.
Aye.
Five eyes, motion carries. Welcome, Brendan.
Welcome, sir. Okay, next item is item number five. Item number five is a resolution to amend a professional services agreement with Weldon Engineering the amount of $30,000 to include additional inspection and construction management time for the Phase II sewer system rehabilitation project.
This is where we begin the Travis Reed part of our agenda, correct?
I think so. I think it's so. Good evening, council. So as you guys know, to echo what the mayor said, Carmageddon is over. We have a couple little minor punchless items that we have to complete with the Phase II sewer project, as well as some project housekeeping. We ran into numerous things out there. This contract duration went on a lot longer than I had hoped it would, but I'm coming back to you guys for what I hope to be, and I know it will be, the last appropriations for this project so we can button it up. As I said, construction engineering services are heavily based on contract time, and with the length of the contract, the amount of things that we ran into, the amount of things that you guys authorized us to fix, including storm drains, additional manholes, things like that, the duration has gone on a little bit longer than we anticipated. So with that, our total for this project, we're up to about $7.4 million. With this addition, the construction engineering services will be at about 6.5% of the project. I think it's very fair and in line. Weldon has provided great inspection, caught numerous things for us, and quite frankly, I don't think the project would have proceeded at the pace that it did, obviously a little slower than we wanted it to, without them. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
I'm not gonna pose any questions, but I'm gonna reiterate that something that's in the staff report that the public needs to hear, which is that over the course of these next couple items, you're gonna hear we've got, you know, amendments to this and amendments to that. Each and every one of these amendments is because we've given Mr. Reed and our Public
Works Department the instruction to not just do the work, but to do the work right. And I think that's a really important message that I hope the public takes with them, is we, like any other project, if anybody's ever opened a house project or done a backyard or done something else, you're going to hear several different items where we found electrical in the ground three inches deep that we didn't know there. We found a tunnel that had been collapsed. We found this that happened. Anytime you start opening a road, any type of construction, you never know what exactly is going to happen. And we have encouraged our Public Works Department to not just do the work, but to do the work right. I think that's something that the citizens expect, I think that's something we expect. And so I just want to make sure that was reiterated, that anything that is coming up here is because we wanted to make sure we did the work right. And so with that, I have no questions for you, sir.
No questions to comment. And I appreciate the work, Travis. You're running to the point of almost falling over the top of your feet, man.
Very true.
At the Cole community, you can see it, and I see people all over town call you out by name for all of your efforts, and I just want to recognize you, man, and I appreciate it. But it looks like everything's sound here, but I just want to give you that kudos that, hey, you make us look good, man.
Well, I appreciate that, but it takes a team.
It does.
Because I've got a lot of good people behind me.
Yep.
My friend, when might work actually begin?
What do you mean? On this project?
Yeah.
So we're pretty much done with this project. This is final closeout stuff. We have very minor punch list items, a couple signs. We have one patch to finish, a little bit of striping, and then final change order negotiations. I'm just going to be real. We had one change order come in from this contractor that I think is absolutely outlandish, so we've been dealing with that. So there's been some added time for things like that. Like I said, I think I take spending city and taxpayer money very, very real, try to spend it like I would spend my own, and I think this is money well spent to fight this claim.
I think I was, forgive me, this was, this was under Carmageddon as it was happening. And you, I can see you're just about done. The, what I was referring to is the sewage treatment plant itself.
Oh, wastewater?
Oh, the wastewater treatment plant. So the wastewater treatment plant right now is about 90% designed, and it is due to probably start construction in fiscal year '26, so first quarter of '26.
My goodness.
So we're pushing, we've got dates scheduled to do a comprehensive review to get it from 90 to 100. We've had a couple hurdles come up with power that I think we've managed with quite grace and have gotten those handled in a very, very timely manner. The base has been very supportive, and we're looking forward to starting that process. We've had a lot of little things come up at the 1941 treatment plant that Sean and his crew have done a great job to manage. I mean, just today, we had a check valve blow up, so they were, everybody was about ready to get off and be done for the day, and then had to come back in and fix a check valve, so.
When you said 1941, you meant the year, 1941?
Yeah, that was when that plant was built.
We visited a slight aside. We visited many cathedrals in Europe and England, one of which was near Stonehenge in Salisbury Plain, large cathedral, proudly. It is able to boast that it was built entirely during one generation. Many other cathedrals took more than one generation. The sewage treatment plant will get rebuilt during one generation.
Absolutely.
Something we can be proud of.
Long in the happening.
We're not going to include, we're not including the planning phase in this, sir.
Fair.
Mr. Rajaratnam, before you say your comment, Travis, can I please have you talking to the mic? I'm getting people say they can't hear you when you turn your head.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Travis, just to tickle you, you said the estimated completion date of May 24, 2024?
The estimated completion date at the time of the first request, that's what we assumed. We gave it a little bit of a buffer, but obviously we had road cave-ins, we added two storm drains, we added some things to the project, so it went a little longer than we expected. Excuse me.
So what would be the estimated completion time now?
For the majority of the work, the vast majority substantial completion is there. It's, like I said, a patch, a little bit of striping, a road sign, so there's very minor, minor items that will not inconvenience the public really at all. So I say that right now, it's pretty much substantially complete. This is just closeout cleanup, final contract negotiations, doing all the post-contract things that we have to have, because we have to store contracts and we have to store all the data and documents for seven years, in case we have an audit from any of our agencies that issue us grant funds. So it's all those kind of items.
Sure, thank you. Any other council comments? Seeing none, any public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to council, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution to amend the professional services agreement as directed.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and second.
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item is item number six. Item number six is a resolution to reallocate Measure V funds from the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Project to the Measure V paving project. Mr. Reed?
As you said, we're into my portion.
We're in the Reed zone.
Yep. So as you guys know, about two months ago, we had an irrigation line that failed on Downstreet. That irrigation line was a two-inch line, puts out a substantial amount of water. It did not surface for some days. Once it did surface, we had portions of Downstreet that collapsed. My staff has been out maintaining that weekly, and what I'm asking tonight is I'm asking to reallocate funds from our budget for our AHSC project so we can do a permanent repair on Downs and widen it to the full width of the intersection, so it sets it up and lines it up with our Norma and Bowman Culvert project. Obviously, I don't want to just go and spend $1.3 million without talking to you guys, that's quite a large sum. In light of this, I've talked to City Manager Strand, I've talked to Cherie. We have grant funding that we have obtained from AHSC that we're due to receive in October for $1.17 million that will backfeed the portion from Measure V. If that were to fall through and we weren't to get it, we have a $3.1 million Streets and Roads claim that is with KernCog right now, it's due to be approved in September. Once that's approved, that can be reallocated back to the AHSC project. So if and when these funds come in, I would come back to you guys to be able to add appropriations to the budget, so we put the project back to what the budgeted number was. And if all those fall through, what I would do is I would take some of the, I'm going to call it the finer items of that project away, like all the underground storm drain, and just use surface drainage to get it to the update to the sump and things like that. And any shortcoming that we have from that, I would take from my budget, so it will not impact any of the FY '24 Measure V paving. Absolutely, I know how important it is to the public that we get a lot of local roads done, so I do not want to impact that project at all. So again, basically what I'm asking is for is a reshuffling of some of our budgeted funds, so we can complete a priority street and get that intersection updated and get it to where our guys can go out and do other road maintenance rather than maintaining Downstreet, fix the medians, and make it a permanent solution to where it sets us up for the future, while we wait on the funds that we have gotten and obtained from the grant to backfeed that project. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Well, thank you, sir. I'm going to just start by just reminding a couple things that, you know, we're not just fixing one piece. When we're fixing it, we're also doing some other things. And anybody who's been at that intersection saw the amount of water damage that Hurricane Hillary did along the edges there. We all, anybody who's driven that intersection knows that the entire intersection is now kind of susceptible in terms of water damage and other things. So this is not just about fixing the irrigation line, but about really doing a comprehensive and doing the work right repair to an intersection that doesn't just have a small irrigation leak, it has an irrigation leak, it has an uphill rise, it is a safety issue for people to be able to see turning left or right in that intersection, it has, it's narrow, and we have all the curb gutter and flooding issues that we have existing there. So I want to be clear that we're not just doing, again, the minimum amount of work. I hate to say this about our community, but we have had sometimes a past where we will choose to do the minimum amount that we can do rather than doing it right. And I think that this is the right attitude that we've had, and such a different attitude is, we're not just talking about doing it, we're going to do it right.
You touched on a very important thing that I failed to mention. Part of this project includes the installation of curbs and gutters that will connect the infrastructure which was put in on Downstreet back in the 90s on the east side of the road that constantly, like with Franklin, we had the issue with mud getting in these storm drains. This will connect some of that infrastructure and limit the amount of mud, which will take away time for our wastewater crew and for our streets crew for maintenance, because now we won't have as much infiltration of mud and debris and things like that that get into that storm drain system.
And we had a 100-year storm last year. I mean, I don't think everyone remembers it.
250.
Well, we'll make it 1,000 years before we're done, but I mean, the simple fact is, I don't think everyone remembers, that's only two days from, the one-year anniversary that's two days from today. So I mean, it was a year ago that we were literally inundated with five and a half inches of rain in 24 hours. Well, these are the things that we learned from it. I mean, just the impact there in terms of being able to get the water to sift off, what we've discovered over by the, behind Home Depot, I don't know, I don't call it by street names, but everything we learned over there. So we not only just see a problem, but we see the problem, we also see the multiple stages of the solution that need to be solved. And we're, I commend Mr. Reed, because what he did is he didn't say, we're going to hesitate to find ways, we're going to find a way to do the fix while we can, while we have the resources in place and while we have the abilities in place to do it, to get it done. And so this has my full support. I understand it's going to be a little bit of inconvenience for those people in that intersection, I do apologize in advance. It's your turn to be inconvenienced while we continue to repair the roads, but we're making huge strides, and I think that's what people are really seeing. They're seeing, tasting, touching that we're doing the committed work that we committed to for this community, and we're doing it right. So with that, any other council comments?
I just want to say you answered two of my questions. One was that it's not going to interrupt the paving and it will negatively affect the city's budget, and I like how you're prioritizing these important projects that need to be, you know, fixed and handled first, and so, and the fact that you have a plan for the plan. So, good job.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
So Mr. Reed, there is no fiscal impact by doing this, right? Everything is just moving pieces from here to there.
Correct. Right now, we are just moving money that was already allocated in the budget from a project that's coming in the future, so we can do this work, and I believe very, very strongly that we will get more than that reimbursed from the two grant projects that we've done. Like I said, our Streets and Roads claim, we get a Streets and Roads claim every year, and with the amount of paving work that you guys approved and that we did in '22, when we get this Streets and Roads claim, we have the ability to take 3.1 million. So I have no doubt that we will have a way to cover this with grant funds, but like I said, in the event that we do have some sort of a hiccup or funds are delayed, City Manager Strand and Cherie and I have come up with a way that it does not negatively impact our budget. What I would do is just change my planning method for how I'm getting water to that sump.
So is there any possibility that we won't get the Streets and Roads claim?
I'm going to say no. I don't feel that there's a possibility that we wouldn't, just based on the track record that we've had with it. We've basically got about $400,000 that we've claimed every year, and then I learned with getting a little bit more involved with KernCog, that they go, you know, you guys did a lot of paving work, and you guys are making the minimum Streets and Roads claim, but you have this amount available to you for a Streets and Roads claim. So, and then when we started talking about, we've seen some of the impacts and the negativity in the California state budget, we wanted to make sure that some of that money didn't disappear for that, so we felt it was very prudent to take what we could while we can.
So in case something like that happens, so do we have a Plan B or?
Correct. So we have a Plan B. My Plan B would be to alter the AHSC project in a way that rather than having underground drainage transport the majority of the water from the intersection of Felspar and Norma to the sump, I would do that above surface and with swales and things like that on the city property there to the south to get that water into the sump.
Thank you, sir.
You have my support, I appreciate it.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to council and ask for a vote, for a motion for approval of a resolution to reallocate Measure V funds from the AHSC to the Measure V paving project.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second.
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries. Thank you.
Two down, two to go. Mr. Reed is up for his next allocation of funds. You would think this would all be easy, you'd think it would be one resolution, but each project is a different project, has a different bucket, has a different set of amounts, but we do this so that the public can transparently see all the different projects that are being done simultaneously. So, Mr. Reed?
So this next one is for, to alter a professional service agreement with Will Dan Engineering in the amount of $10,000. So as you guys know, we've been very successful over the last three years in obtaining grant funding for projects. When you take grant funding, you are subject to state and federal audits. We got randomly selected, yay, to have an audit on the West Ward 2 Avenue project. We have it written in all of our contracts that we can, we receive aid from our consultant for a lot of the reporting and grant issues that would kill 99% of my time if I had to do all of the paperwork to do it, so they prepare some of it for us, help us maintain all the files. We had four full four-inch three-ring binders as we went through this audit. The audit came back clean, it had no findings. I even had a handshake from the representative from Caltrans who said that that was the easiest and the best audit and the most prepared they've ever seen somebody for an audit. So what I'm doing is asking for an additional $10,000 to cover the other time that Will Dan has provided us to get us through the audit proceedings. And with that, I am open for any questions.
Makes sense.
I have none. Any other council questions?
No, I'm not worried about $10,000.
I was going to say audits are usually not fun, but you seemed to have made it fun.
My personal first thing is that $10,000 in audits is actually kind of cheap, but we understand it's also costs and taxpayer funds, and we want to make sure that we don't make a joke about it. The key here is that we are, again, doing the best rather than just doing the halfway, so.
Yeah, and I will also say, when you look at the total cost for this job, the total cost for this job was about $2.3 million. Of that 2.3, we got 1.58 funded by this. So I think $10,000 is worth it, right?
I think the juice was worth the squeeze.
Exactly.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to council for a motion to approve the resolution to amend the professional services agreement with Will Dan Engineering in the amount of $10,000.
I made a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
And last is a resolution, item number eight, a resolution of the Ridgcrest City Council to appropriate additional funds for the Leroy Jackson Park Improvement Project. Okay.
Last one.
Last one.
So as you guys know, we've done about $4 million worth of work at the Leroy Jackson Park. I think it's starting to look better than it ever has, we're nearing the completion. In our quest to do things right, again, we ran into some numerous unknowns for areas that we did not have as-built drawings for. We found numerous runs for the lighting that we took over from the county some years ago, for the installation of a bathroom that the mayor so gracefully wanted for the community. We did some additional upgrades to the parking lots there, so that way they were better delineated with curbs. We're working on a solution for the lighting issue for the groups out there, so they can better control how the lights turn on and off. So we want to try to get them to where they function independently of each field, so that way they don't rent one softball field and have to pay for the lights to light all three. Or rent one soccer field and have to pay for the lights to light all three. So we're trying to make it a little bit more cost-effective for all of our groups. With that, the current project overage is about $475,000, it's quite a bit, but in talking with City Manager Strand and Cherie, we feel that putting money into Quality of Life out of our general fund reserve, which is where the contingency funds for this project came from, is a good use of those funds. I also think that I have a contract amendment in this for Will Dan. When we went through the negotiation procedures from the RFP for this, we assumed a contract duration, and we thought that the tennis court project and the park project would be going project and the park project would be going on simultaneously, and we could use one inspector to inspect both. And unfortunately, with not getting any bids, having to negotiate with a contractor and follow our purchasing policy, that did not work. So, we are asking for additional funds for inspection on that project. With the downstreet stuff that you guys just improved, we are utilizing the same inspector. We have built these two contracts, assuming individual inspectors for both. So, we should have more than enough funds to cover everything we need for inspection time. But I didn't want to have to burden you guys and come back again and ask for additional funds if some other unknown came up that we didn't foresee. I don't foresee there, us needing more for anything else like this, other than we don't have a cost for the timers yet. We don't have a cost for a couple little outstanding items. So, when we file the notice of completion on the construction side for this job, there may be some minor additional appropriations, but nothing in the same magnitude as this. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Well, I'll go ahead and start the, you know, like any other project, when you have a big cost overrun like this, you know, you want to start understanding it. And I'm just going to share the story of the understanding, start on day two. Because it was on day two where we dug the first into the ground and hit electrical that was not in any of the build, build sheets by the county. If, for those that don't remember, the Leroy Jackson Sports Complex was a county-owned park that was essentially given to the city about 12 years ago, in the ballpark of the area.
It was in the 90s, wasn't it?
No, I thought it was given to us.
Was it in the 2000s?
No, we, we had a lease of it. We, they leased it to us, and then they gave it to us after the dissolution of the RDA.
Yeah. So, right about, yeah, 12 years ago, I'm in the right ballpark. So, and, and, and they, you know, they said, yeah, as long as you take care of it, you can have it. And, but there's some surprises that came along the way. And like anything else, you know, as soon as you dive into something and you hit an electrical line, that's going to stop everything, and you're going to reassess where that electrical line is going. And that was day two. The other one that I really want to highlight and reiterate is, we all understand we live in a beautiful area. It's wonderful. We love Ridgecrest because of our mountains in our area, but it's also rural. It's also three hours away from most urban areas. And to get a tennis court built, or rebuilt technically, that was not an easy process to find the contractor, to find, we didn't get bids. But this is a community asset that we know we want to have rebuilt. We wanted to have it repaired after the earthquakes, and we wanted everything in that park to look and be at the quality that the community experiences. And I got to tell you, the number of pickleball players that have chewed my backside over closing it tells me that there is a high demand for those courts. And that is proof in its own self. We set out to do it right. And I do recognize that every taxpayer has a right to be concerned about overlays, but the fact is that we've done right for this community for the last 12 years in rebuilding our general fund, that when we find ourselves in this situation, we're not so concerned about whether or not we even have the general fund, but more importantly, are we doing right for our citizens first? And in this case, I think we absolutely have. I commend all the work that's being done. You know, building up those parks and building the quality of life for our citizens is not a maybe, it's a necessity. And I think we've done a great job of that and seeing this project come to completion with all of its new amenities. I mean, nobody's dancing a big jig about a bathroom, but I know there are plenty of young ladies out there on the softball field that really do appreciate the fact that that's there now. And I know that there's going to be people there playing in the night tournaments that are going to be very happy that it's there now. And the walking path, and the first time I get to see a grandma in a wheelchair take it all the way from a parking lot to see their grandson's sports, I'm going to feel real good about it, too. Because that's what we did. We didn't just make improvements, but we made improvements so that everyone can have a piece of what the quality of life is we expect for this community. So, with that, I'm going to quit my rambling and promoting and say, thanks, you, Mr. Reed. Any other council comments?
Nope. Nothing for me. Appreciate it.
There is also a comprehensive list of some of the major big-ticket items that we added to this project in the staff report, if anybody is interested.
Yeah. Other comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Counsel, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council to appropriate additional fundings for the Leroy Jackson Park Improvement Project?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
I'll get off my soapbox now.
Be gone with you. You're done.
Good job.
You got all your money. Move on.
Thank you.
And the citizens continue to get more and more for this community, which is really, at the end of the day, the important message. Next is item number nine. Item number nine is introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code as it relates to the positions subject to the Conflict of Interest Code. Ms. Charlon, it's your turn.
Yes, sir.
That means this is compliance or, or, or some type of housekeeping.
Every two years, we have to update our code based on our positions that we have within the budget. Some of them are just title changes. Some of them are additions. You can see in the staff report, the ones we deleted and the ones we added. So, this is just cleanup of the code so that those that have to report annually know the requirement. This is for the Form 700 that I collect every year from y'all. And with that, if you have any questions, let me know. It's pretty simple.
Straightforward.
Very straightforward. I don't know if the public quite understands that every year, every elected official or those officials designated with the potential conflict of interest, they file a form that is a statement of their economic interest. So, for, for example, I have to file a form that says I own a home. I have to file a form that says I have a job. And those, those pieces are collected by the FPPC in order to ensure, one, that we don't have any special interests in which that we are able to speak up for, shall we say. Or secondarily, also, do we have any economic interests in projects that are being done? It's an important transparency, and it's done every single year by each one of us, and it's been done for years by several members of our staff if they are in positions that, that can impact it. So.
It, it goes with anybody that has some type of a decision-making policy over the money.
Over my, for a taxpayer.
Yep.
For a taxpayer law.
Okay.
I do have a, I do have a question for clarification purpose. So, chief building official, do we have one?
Travis.
Oh, he's everything.
Yeah. He's everything. Yeah. And not all these get reported to the FPPC. There's, the, the good majority of them have to go straight to the FPPC, but a small amount of them have to stay with me in my office, because if we get audited, Cherie will ask me, and I have to produce them to the auditors. So, and not everybody goes straight to the FPPC. Some of them stay in my office. And they have been polled. I usually have to poll several of them every year.
So, police captains also should file?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because they spend police money.
Okay. There's clarifications. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council comments?
I, I will say one more thing. I'm sorry for interrupting. Mr. Rajaratnam did point out to me that in the ordinance, it does state under the Section 1 Amendment that there's some underlying denoting additions and strike-throughs. I'm going to take that comment out, because what I did instead was I listed it in the staff report. So, I'm going to take that comment out of the ordinance for the cleanup, just so you guys know that.
Thank you.
For the second reading.
Thank you. On the second reading?
Yeah, I'll take it out for the second reading. That'll be the only change.
Just that way, I don't have to make a change in the motion tonight. That's all I'll do.
No.
Okay. Okay. Any other council comments? Hearing none. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council, and I would request a motion to waive reading in full of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code as it relates to the conflicts of interest.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second?
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
And then, if I may ask for a motion to introduce my title only in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest amending the Ridgecrest Municipal Code as it relates to conflicts of interest.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second?
Please vote.
Five eyes, motion carries. And I will let you know that for the second reading, it's going to skip a meeting, so it won't be coming back until September 18th.
Okay. Okay. Next item is our committee reports. We have, let's see. It looks like we have Finance is the only one that has met since our last meeting. Finance met on August 13th. It was a good meeting. I will let you, you want to, you want to run the meeting?
I'll follow along with you. Go ahead.
First and foremost, I was thankful, and I want to just put a shout out to our, our newest city editor who's here, which is Mr. Crutchfield was there, and we appreciated having him there. I think it's excellent that we're getting that exposure and that the community's getting a chance to understand how, just what a job the, the Finance Department and Cherie has done on getting our, our finances in order. It's not that long ago, if I remember correctly, that we were rated as one of the most challenged financial cities in the state. And I went to go look for that report, and interestingly enough, it's no longer provided. So, the state has cut that report due to budget cuts. Okay? We can all chuckle at that, you know? We don't want to know what cities are fiscally in trouble in the middle of a budget crisis, so we'll just cut that. But the last year before that, that they did, we had moved up into the upper percentile of stable and well-funded cities, and largely due because we had rebuilt our, our general fund. The overall financials for the city look very good for the year. We are just slightly over budget overall by about $200,000 if you take all of the pluses and minuses for the different categories from sales tax revenue. We are starting to see a little bit of softening of the post-COVID money. But when I say a little bit, we were still $200,000 over budget. So, the softening is, we're talking about revenue shortfalls within the 1% to 2% margin of variance. So, we're not talking anything of significance right now. I'll let you.
One of the other things we went over was the, there have begun the process of a compensation study. And so, I think as many already know that a few years back, we did a compensation study, and the city was in a position where the employees hadn't received a color raise in, I believe it was approximately 11 years. Yeah. And so, at the completion of that study and with additional revenues that the city has been able to, to get through, you know, the Measure V and Measure P and, and our general budget, we were able to address those issues and, and do an analysis and bring employees up to a more current pay scale. We knew that when we did the last compensation study that we would, you would need fine detail and continuation. So, this is that continuation. So, I'm really glad to see that. Anyway, so that, I thought that was good news, big news, and to keep our, keep our employees solid. And anyway, that's all I have.
Again, the staff salary survey is a big step forward, because now we're not just chasing, making sure that our employees.
Maintenanceing.
But we're maintaining and making sure that they're, they're compensated properly moving forward. That is a big difference in attitudes, and especially something that we fiscally were unable to do prior to Measure V and Measure P. Okay. I don't believe there were any other committee reports, other committees, boards or commissions? I don't hear any. I will go ahead and just give you a LAFCO report. For those people assigned to walk in at the last minute, I was at the LAFCO meeting this afternoon. The only reason why I'm even raising LAFCO just for the group is I just want to communicate to those citizens that have concerns about the Inyo Kern community and everything that's going on with the Inyo Kern CSD. Obviously, the City of Ridgecrest has no relevant hand in that, as it's a separate municipal agency. But I just want to give the assurance to citizens that are worried about it, that different agencies throughout Kern County and throughout the state are actively engaging in the situation. I want to put a shout out to the Indian Wells Valley Water District, who really stood up and, and, and worked hard for those community members to get water out to them and to make sure that they were not without water when the well went down. But if you're looking for an interesting read in challenges faced by municipal agencies, the grand jury report for Inyo Kern CSD can be, is, is an interesting bedtime read. But it's really a challenging situation that has developed. There's about 240 citizens that are impacted by it from a water service perspective. But overall, I just wanted to give those citizens that are worried about those residents and, and those residents who may tune in as, as part of our community that I can assure you that the different agencies throughout the state, Kern County, are actively working on the concerns that you have. And they reached LAFCO today for actions that we can take to support it. And then I want to extend that words of appreciation to the Water District for getting water out to them and trying to take care of them during those times. Any other committees?
City Manager Report. Yes. To answer Mr. Wicknick's question about that slide, now, we have to remember who pays sales tax within the city of Ridgecrest. Currently, everyone in Indian Wells Valley pays sales tax. People who live in the county, people who live in the city. Currently, about 35% of our population lives outside the city of Ridgecrest. You also have to look at, what is our trade area? In other words, who comes to Ridgecrest to shop? Our trade area is pretty clear. It's people as far north as Bishop, Independence, Lone Pine, Trona, Kern River Valley, and to some extent, California City. So, when those folks come in and shop in Ridgecrest and buy fuel, they're paying our sales tax. That's one of the reasons why I believe that Measure V and Measure P were attractive to the community, because it just wasn't the citizens of Ridgecrest paying a property tax, let's say, to build a pool or to support law enforcement. It was everybody that uses our services when they come into the community. Also, who pays that? Our people who come through Ridgecrest, visiting the, the numerous people each year that stay at our local hotels, that do work on the base, they pay our sales tax. So, this was generated as an estimate by our finance director based upon all that activity that we have within the city of Ridgecrest. It's just not solely the citizens who live within our boundaries who pay sales tax. It's all those who live within the valley that do not go two hours to go shopping at Walmart in Palmdale. It's those people who come here. And so, we are a trade area. We are a center of, of shopping for a number of people, not just the people in Indian Wells Valley. So, that's how that estimate was brought up.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Next item is future agenda items. And I have one that I'm going to bring up. Might, might stir a little controversy. Oh, the, you, who wants to go first? Rock, paper, scissors?
Mine's not controversial.
Mine, mine's not, mine's not controversial, but, but, you know, I really appreciate the citizen engagement that we always have at City Council. And I would just inquire, is it time for us to move past the call-in commentary? I don't know. I'm not saying, we've had no call-in commentary today. We haven't had it for the last few meetings. I know that that was something that was very emergent during COVID and was very necessary. I'm not saying that we should get rid of it or not get rid of it. I'm simply posing a question for the council for consideration. And I, it literally hit me tonight, because nobody would call in. I was kind of surprised by that. And just a thought is, do we, as a council, as a, as a city, as a community, feel that it's necessary to continue that? Maybe that's something we can talk about down the line or in the future.
I can let you know that that is something that comes up quite a bit in the city clerk world. We have a listserv where I talk to quite a few city clerks every day, and that is a topic of conversation that has come up. And there have been some that have decided the hybrid meetings don't work anymore, and they have canceled it, and some just choose to keep it. So, there is, in my understanding, no rule or law that says that you have to continue to do it. I can reach out to Paul or to Martin and, and verify that, but I've seen just as many decide that they're not going to do it as just stay with it, because it seems to be convenient for some.
I, yeah. And I, I don't, it's not an inconvenience. It's not a problem, but it's just something that struck me when we were, this is probably the third or fourth meeting where we've had limited, and whether it's something that we would want to talk about. Mr. Raymond.
So, I'm not sure if this falls under the, an agenda item, but I was coming down, it's Warner Street that runs next to Freedom Park?
Correct.
Okay. So, I was coming down Warner tonight to the meeting, and it was very actively used. And a lot of families, a lot of kids, a lot of people, and I had to crawl to a stop and, and stop several times and letting people open doors and move, you know, kids and, and families across. And so, it dawned on me that we got a pool coming in, and, and I think it's just going to add more, more, put traffic, more people. And I was thinking we should maybe have it in the queue to devise a, a slow road.
That, that's already, that's already in the pool plan.
That's a pool plan.
We've already addressed in the pool plan. Yes, yeah.
That's why I wasn't sure.
We're, we're looking at narrowing the road, putting a HAWK light system in. So, because we had the issue last time when Penny pulled. we had the issue last time when Penny Pool was operating, that was a concern, was trying to get the kids across the park, so that is part of our plans for Penny Pool.
Perfect.
And I will let you know, oh, go ahead, Nerissa.
Yes.
So I just wanted to add that we actually have IWV Youth Cheer out there in Freedom Park right now, due to the grass project that we're doing at Leroy Jackson. We're down a field, so that also is adding to the activity out there.
Gotcha. Yeah, it's great to see it, and no complaint from me, I don't mind slowing down and stopping, but I figured since the pool's coming, it'd be good to, you know, preempt it, which we're doing, so it's fantastic.
It's in there. I always love when we have a pool thing, it's in there. Okay, any other future agenda items? Okay, with that, I will move on to mayor and council comments. Mr. Gorman, I'm going to let you be the first off tonight, if you have anything, sir.
I have nothing.
Mr. Heyman.
So I have one. This is a shout-out to the Ridgecrest Police Department. So I had a resident contact me and send some footage of a Ring camera of an individual acting pretty nefarious, and, and so, and whether or not, you know, I was aware of it, or they were concerned about it, I said, "Well, I will, I'll contact the PD." So I called today, and I had a call back quickly from an officer, and I explained it to him, and he said, "Yes, we were aware of that, and that individual is apprehended and been taken into, you know, had been taken into custody." And I started laughing, I was just like, "This is fantastic." And I've seen this in action numerous times with our police department, and I just want to commend the Ridgecrest PD for being so proactive, so, you know, hardworking to keep this city safe. And, because it's concerning to the residents, you know, when something like this occurs. It had, a similar episode had occurred, I think it's been about a year ago or so, but, and this one was actually a family member, my daughter, her house, they just moved out of it, and someone had broke into it, and one of the officers that responded, he said, "You know, review your cameras and see if you, if you find anything, and, you know, it doesn't matter what time of night, whatever, call me." So 10, 11 o'clock at night, she called him, and she'd seen, running through the footage, this individual come to the front door, and he was carrying something in his hands, and turned out it was a catalytic converter, so I think it was a, maybe a dual arrest for him, because we, at the time, we were having, you know, catalytic converter issues. But anyway, and the police, by 7:00 in the morning, they had the suspect apprehended. And so, two things. One, I think having those Ring cameras or some kind of cameras at your house and business is, it seems to be a really worthwhile thing to have, to help keep you safe and to help the police department in their, in their work. Anyway, just a big shout-out to Ridgecrest PD for such quick, quick work, and we appreciate you greatly.
Thank you. Senator O'Sullivan.
I just want to thank our staff for the great job, and I appreciate what you do, public works, finance, as well as parks and recs. So you guys, you are on top of things, so I really appreciate what you do for this community. Thank you so much.
Slade.
Yeah, just, a thank you for the city nights to the community. A lot of people came out, it was a great success. People had a blast, they had a great time. At first, we weren't sure if you were going to be able to hear DJ, vice the band, because there was so much noise going on, but I think when you walked towards the middle, it was very well-balanced, that all worked out. The car show, the car show was a blast. I enjoyed walking around and judging, that was a, that was a good time. Staff did amazing, appreciate all the work that happened there. And Chief, the explorers, it was great to see them out, walking around, and your police officers had a lot of good interaction. It was positive. And there was three, for the car show, we gave three awards, one to Kevin Flonte, Raymond Kelso, and Megan Baranowski. So congratulations to them.
To laugh. Thank you, sir. And yeah, it was a wonderful night, and the weather was fantastic. It was, it was a perfect weather night, in a lot of ways. It was a little warm at the start, but perfect by the night time. I have just a couple of things, nothing huge. The first is, again, a further invitation to join us, 10:00 a.m., September 3rd, for the demolition kickoff of Penny Pool. The second is a personal plug, if you have a, any school-aged children, and you'd like to learn more about scouting, our Scoutarama is this weekend at the Desert Empire Fairgrounds. You guys know I wear a couple, many different hats, and that happens to be one of them, and I'm very proud of our scouting family. And if you have kids that are interested, we'd love to see them and get a chance to show them what scouting does. And then I want to put another huge shout-out to our RPD. You know, Solomon, I meant Doc, said some great things about them, but anybody who failed to catch, they had a pretty awesome press release released this afternoon, and they seized, how many pounds there, Chief?
Three.
Three. Okay, and a months-long bust out of Inyo Kern. Again, these are the types of things that we need to recognize Measure V provides for our community. Measure V is up for renewal, I can't advocate from the dais, and so I won't, but I'll simply remind the citizens that when you read these press releases and you see all the incredible work being done by our Ridgecrest Police Department, that those are what Measure V has been able to power, and to make sure that we have those officers there, trained, and that they have the resources. I don't know if that was why I saw the Bearcat and the vehicles rolling last night, but I saw them, and I went, "Something going down," and so did everyone else. I think Facebook went crazy for about an hour with everyone trying to figure out what was going on, but at the end, kudos to you and your department for our job well done. Finally, you know, we are going into a very interesting season, as we always do in this community, and during this time, it's real easy for us to forget that we still live, work, eat, sleep, and participate with each other in many different ways. And there can be things that are said that are good, things that are said that are bad, things that we say that we regret saying, and things that others say that they regret saying. And it just reminds me of a quote that I hope everyone takes to heart, and that is that "No one ever heals themselves by bullying somebody else." And I hope that you all take that to heart, that when you go something wrong, it's not, doesn't mean that you should take it out on somebody else in order to try and heal yourself, but rather look inward and try and see where you can be kind. It goes a long way as a community, and it's done wonders for ourselves. So best wishes, have a wonderful evening, and we'll see you at the next meeting.